To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pillar, would you please give the bird?
Sure.
Federal and Father heads, please.
Your Heavenly Father, we thank and praise you for the gift of the days that you give us, the weather you give us and the surrounding community you allow us to live in. We pray that you watch over the activities of this meeting this evening, that we can satisfy you and that we can meet the needs of our citizens. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, reading and approval of minutes from August 15th, please.
Motion for both the reading of the minutes and approve them as exact.
Motion by Pillar.
Okay.
Second by Weider. Discussion. All in favor of these minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. It's approved. Approval of the agenda. Any changes, additions? Monty already made a change from the original, removing five C.
Yeah, eight, six, three.
And adding six eight.
Motion approved.
Motion by Weider. Approved. Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Five A, engineers' report. Monty, want to add anything from the meeting this morning at all or construction meeting? I don't think there's really anything else that we need to talk about.
No, basically DN Tanks is hoping to be demobilizing by the end of the week, first part of next week, until their work will be completed. Tan will be doing, hopefully they're testing on the water lines, the water mains that they installed later this week or early next week as well. And then it's pretty much done besides the ground work after, after the next.
One of the questions I asked was whether the color, as you see it right now, is going to be the final color, and they did indicate that that is the case. I had a couple of citizens that just asked me a question, is it going to be green, is it going to say hazy, and all that type of stuff. So they answered the question this morning that what you see right now is what will be left as.
Anything else on our engineers' report?
I'm okay.
Yeah, alright. Dave, you were there this morning for the meeting, anything else?
Nothing else.
Alright. Water plant and reservoir demolition slash sale. This morning, Monty and I met with a realer that we contacted a few weeks ago and had her do some legwork for us on getting a, try to get a value for that building. She had quite a binder full of information for us. You can see up there, the value she is recommending, which is, I don't know if that's a starting point or what, however, this is good information for us to have when, if and when we do put this project out for, for sale or for bids or whatever, but she also recommended, you know, if we, if we did anything to the building after, if it were to be listed, that said wouldn't touch the building except for maybe touching up that, with some paint on that metal where the paint's peeling. She also didn't think it'd be valuable enough to spend any more money on removing dirt or doing any other landscaping type stuff to that property, that'd be a good negotiating item for someone who's interested in buying that property. So, Monty has a complete binder of what she had with values and all the other information. Would anybody like to see that? But this could be a decent starting point if we wanted to put a minimum out there for the building for, to put it out for bids.
Is this width, that price there, is that width tank called back or what?
Well, everything is sitting there right now. Weight is right now. Yep. It was hard for her to do comparables.
Sure.
But she did grab a couple, there were two properties in Vismar, or Beela, but she couldn't go much further than, further than, you can't compare Vismar properties, so.
What is, what is that property classified as right now? It's on commercial. Okay.
So, I don't know, it was good information, but I don't know if we're... What do you guys want to do for the next step? Do you still want to do some dirt work, you know, after? One thing I would like to do yet is after Harvest Fest, get that fence, the chain link fence taken down, so maybe easier for some maintenance and just look nicer as well without spending much money. And then there's some holes in the ground where the concrete was out, we can fill back in some filler, but other than that, I, I don't see why we want to spend more money removing all that, that three feet of dirt off that hill and leveling that down unless you guys, that's something that you, some major part of it, but.
So then this is the plan then, I guess, the sell-off thing?
That's the plan I would like to see, and I'd like to, I'd like to sell it. Would it be a nice addition to our city hall? Yeah, it would. Do we have a couple hundred thousand dollars we want to put into that project? Does it work that? What's the pay? You know, we'll never get the payback on that for, is it something that a business or like HCD would want to make office spaces? I don't know.
You didn't put together any blueprints or anything last year?
No.
As far as that tank called back, I, I kind of think we should get rid of it. While we can get it under that grant thing, you know, they're going to pay sixty percent to get rid of it. If we don't, you know, there might be a lot of people that shy away from buying it because of that, because if it does deteriorate, it will be their responsibility, and that's a whole lot of money, you know, to get rid of it. I'm not saying it's going to help the resale, but personally, me, yes, it would help the resale if I was looking at buying it. I would gladly look at it stronger without that back there. Then when it's back there, it's my responsibility after I buy it.
Okay.
And it may, you know, for a potential buyer, provide some parking, his rear and stuff like that, if it were taken care of, or a downed degree, possibly add on to the building then, or shed, I mean, something, I don't know. As long as we have that grant there, I think we should utilize it, get rid of it, and then go from there. That's my opinion.
Monty, do you know more specifics about the grant and getting rid of that?
I know what's included in our overall project, so that was part of the upfront numbers given to the state.
And is that the part that TAN is concerned about? Their biggest fear about removing that?
Yep. No, that's their biggest fear. If they're cutting it first, I don't know why they're so concerned about it.
I don't know the process.
No, we talked to Jared then one day, and he didn't seem to be too concerned about it. He's also not the one giving work either.
Yeah. Well, again, this is a decision that needs to be made tonight, but this is good information, and maybe, maybe by the next meeting, if everybody gets a chance to look at Heather's reports and digest that a little bit, but.
Maybe we put it on the agenda for some discussion for next Tuesday morning's construction meeting as well.
Okay.
Just bring it up that there's, there's a concern in selling it, that it could be a detriment possibly for a potential audience out there, so.
And we do have some interest in it already.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, we can't share that yet, but there is interest in it.
Other than TAN?
Mm-hmm. And they haven't seen this report yet, though. And remember, TAN did offer us, was it fifty or sixty thousand, Monty's? But that wouldn't, we wouldn't be receiving that in cash. That would be taken off of the overall construction bill, deconstruction, whatever.
So we wouldn't even be really seeing fifty thousand dollars of value because of the sixty forty split, so.
Right.
It'd be less than that. Okay.
Okay.
Good information, thank you.
Alright.
I guess you can like, I can scan the new data report and send it to you.
I guess I'm okay with it. I think that values, values in the fair dollar. Does anybody not want to sell it? Does anybody think we need to hang on to it for, in cases you ever hear thoughts?
The only thing that I'm worried about is, I mean, even if we were to, if down the road, I mean, like need a new, new, I guess, like hall here, you know, it's what's going to be the plan then, you know? But if we get that much money for it, yeah, that'd be okay.
Yeah, well, right, and maybe that's not realistic, I don't know, but a new hall down the road, you know, that could be twenty years. I mean, we hanging onto it that long and that it's all part of being ice or I don't know. Alright, so that's good information. Moving on. Six eight, Chalk Fest two update. Lauren, you're up.
Chalk Fest two? Well, the first thing I want to say, and I only want to say it first because I'm so afraid I'll forget to say it if I don't, was that the artist said they have never chalked on a cleaner street. I don't know what you did to make that happen, but.
Just run the streets, leave it open, don't.
Yeah, anyway, thank you for that. So, but that just sets the tone for thank you, City Commission, for everything you did to support the Chalk Fest and support the committee, and, you know, you guys are just kind of the backdrop, but you're such an important partner, you're there with the, you know, the garbage, barricades, the street cleaning, the, you know, park board help, and the way the park looks, and so we really appreciate, you know, your support. And it goes all the way back to two thousand seventeen, when you said, okay, go ahead and make that park beautiful, and so it's kind of been a continuing thing for the last five years, and so we thank you for that.
Yep, you got to thank you. I know the, I know the work that's gone into it.
Yeah, yeah, and the money, you know, the community's money, and so, but then add to Chalk Fest two, I guess we felt it was a great success. We brought in ten artists. We don't have any idea how many people were there because it's not the kind of thing where admission was happening. At our meals that we served, we served two hundred and fifty the first night and, and left the next night because they ran out of food, but you, another quantifying thing is that last year we had sixty of those little black squares on the street that the kids did, and this year we had about a hundred and fifty. So we have lots of kids, lots of families, and I think there probably were more than a thousand people around in those days. So, you know, we don't charge any money. The artists love to come here, this is their favorite Chalk Festival, and they love it because we don't charge money, and because then it's so organic and people can just come and participate and there's no barriers financially, you know, or age-wise, and so it attracts a lot of people. So we're really happy with how it turned out, ten artists, two days, I don't know, maybe eight or ten different musical groups. So, we already are dreaming about next year for Chalk Fest three. So we'll be meeting in October. We're going to reach out and try to go on the committee with some people who are younger than we are, so that, you know, there's some forward motion and we can let go and younger people in the community can take over, and so we'll have a meeting in October to talk about Chalk Fest three. So I know you guys are going to be putting your budget together, we haven't asked you for money. If you find some money somewhere, we can all do, we did end up bringing in enough to end up with thirteen hundred dollars for next year's start, so not bad. So, and then listening to your discussion about the water tower, if you want a mural on that, we could probably do that next year too.
Yeah, I thought we were going to build that scaffolding from here. I think that's, yeah, kind of shaky, yeah.
Shit, oh.
Yeah, yeah.
I hope you liked the mural, like I said, sort of last time I told you it was sort of temporarily permanent, you know, as long as it lasts and looks good, and we may paint it over and do something different next year.
I'm surprised how long some of the stuff is being on the street.
I know.
You know, the three D rabbits are still in great shape.
The jack rabbit?
Yeah.
We hope to get more three D art. We had a lot of portrait art, but I think the three D stuff is just all control.
Well, I was surprised by one of the artists that said that she, from the cities area, they do a Chalk Fest and the community thirty thousand, and they don't do half this many kids that come and participate, yeah.
Yeah, that's crazy.
And they, they struggle to get, you know, to get half that many squares, but, so, thank you guys.
Yeah, it was hot, you know, the first day was hot, but we were playing water and nobody painted. Anyway, any questions? Anybody interested in being part of Chalk Fest three, just might as well, if you're younger than I am.
That's the limitation.
Oh, oh no, you'd have to be younger than me tonight when I was shooting.
Oh, okay.
Anyway, thank you for.
Yeah, thanks, Lauren. It was awesome. Moving all the way down to nine, to the reports, water sewer.
Okay, I, I met with our, our water staff this morning and Dave, and we, we had quite a bit of discussion on some of the different things going on around the city as it relates to our sewer system, some of the work that's been done recently on that. Things are looking very good, it looked like it was money well spent, and we'll continue to monitor those things. But one of the things we talked about a little bit is our ordinance that's put together with regard to our waters and sewers, particularly as it's relating to the payment of the city utility bills, and I've been educated a little bit that we have a fair number of folks within our city who choose to, to use the, the system. What I mean by that is they'll, they'll go through all of the steps associated with and up to cutting off their water, then come in, pay their water bill, and then get their water reestablished. I'm not sure what the logic is behind it, but we've, we've had a fair amount of that reoccurring. You know, I don't know that it's, in my opinion, good use of our, our resource, our staff, both in the city hall here in terms of sending out reminder letters, you know, that type of stuff, and then for our water folks out there, cutting off service, having to go back out oftentimes after hours to reestablish service. And so we've been having some discussion as of late with regard to several of our different ordinances, that maybe they need a little bit more teeth. Sometimes just a fine in there isn't, isn't enough, and so I, I bring it up here just to let you know that, that I'm going to work with, with staff, maybe some of you guys individually, to have conversations on the language, and then we'll bring it in for, for discussion at the meetings here. Sometimes it's not a financial, the financial thing is not a hindrance to, to anyone out there. It amazes me oftentimes, you know, the folks have no problem coming in, writing a check with a penalty onto it, you know, once their, their water is cut off. And so I'm looking at language that maybe, maybe reestablishing the, the service, that it's the next business day, as opposed to pulling our people out after hours if they come in and pay the bill at four o'clock in the afternoon. Sometimes I feel like if you're without service, maybe that speaks a little bit more, so I want, I want to get it to the point where, with, with the staff that we have and the homework that we have to do in the city, we're doing it all as efficiently as possible, and if we can do that by correcting some of these situations, I think that would be a positive. So, more to come on that, but I just wanted you guys to be aware of it. And then the, the last thing I have is lift station three, that's under new business, and I'll address that when we get down there.
Okay, any questions for Dan? Streets, cemetery. Any, Dave?
Hello, everything's going good, we're getting ready for winter, gearing up, cooking, getting back off street sweeping. I'd like to purchase oil for a bulk container at the shop, come fall here, so our orders are going to need oil changes and such. I priced it fifty five gallons, it's going to cost us over fourteen hundred dollars. Need approval to get some oil back in our bulk barrel or whatever.
One barrel would be enough?
What, that one barrel?
Enough?
Yeah, I usually buy in fifty gallon, the next, that period is quite a while, we're probably saving it just right at the wrong point, but we'd like to keep it.
Do you buy hydraulic fluid too? I know last winter, we had a couple leaks.
We usually just buy that in jugs or whatever, we don't have a bulk container for that. It is cheaper in bulk or whatever, but I don't know if we use enough to, wanting to put in another barrel or whatever.
Okay.
It's a pretty good cost savings, so if I buy the oil in bulk.
So did you buy the, your jugs of hydraulic at the same time then, just to?
Yeah, as we need them or whatever, we keep a couple on hand.
Has there been a shortage issue?
No.
Okay.
How much was that, Dave? Uh, fourteen forty-eight for fifty gallons. It's synthetic oil, so we thought the hour that we'd act to run on the equipment, we could stretch out our oil, ginseng, and all this stuff, we could do that, you know. We did that last year, whatever, or year before, but the prices have definitely increased.
We need action on that too. Okay, I'd make a motion then to approve the expenditure of fourteen forty-eight for fifty gallons of synthetic oil used in the city.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Pillar and a second by Weider. You said it was fifty-five gallons, right?
Fifty.
Okay, okay. Alright. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We'll call.
Pillar, aye. Weider, aye. Stern, aye. Over and out.
Aye. Very.
You also mentioned to me a couple of, a couple of wheels, a couple of tires.
Yeah, ordered a couple steer tires for the garbage truck. We got the recaps, that's for, they fit the back of the garbage truck and all the dump trucks, but.
We had.
On winter, we're going to need steer tires.
We did those recaps for a bunch of the tires. That was approved.
That was approved before, okay. And you know, the other thing I had, that Jason still wanted, a price book on a angle blade or a snow gate or whatever.
I've got it down in the.
We do have it on the later.
Okay, snow moment.
Well, the snow.
Right. Yeah, the leaves will be, I think, noticed today that they're starting to drop a little bit.
Yes, man, they're starting to hurt colors, so.
Street sweeper, the new, new, new machine will get worked out soon. Finance busing library, Casey.
I don't have that thing.
Police fire. Buster?
I don't really have too much, other than the fact that in regard to the building next door, you know, my concern would be is, I think, you know, possibly selling it's okay, depending upon what would go in there. You know, the thing about it is we have to keep in mind that it's on Main Street and it's got probably pretty good homes, you know, so. I think if you're going to look at selling it, you need to be selective in terms of where, what might be going in there. I know that once a person buys it, it could always change, that's the problem.
Or by ownership, or by owner hands, too.
Yeah, that too. But I have had a, a couple of parties that have visited with me. One, a party who is from out of town about the possibility of relocating to Hazen, which would be a good, I think a good gig for the city, if we could get them. Of course, you know, the problem that we have is they're looking for space, you know, they probably need three to four thousand square feet. Another party that's in town is just outgrowing their space, and they need probably the same thing, you know, in terms of where it's at. I have visited with a couple of, of businesses in town about the possibility, whether or not they're interested in possibly, you know, getting into a lease agreement because they might have some space that would be able to handle that, build some requirements, these people that are looking at doing some of that restructuring possibly, so that's always encouraging, you know, when people want to come our direction. That's, that's good. You know, as far as really anything else, I'm, myself, I'm planning to go to a few conferences now, this fall, yeah, definitely. Economic Development and looking at Energy Council, we're certain. Also, we're going to head up, when I say we, I think Monty, you're going to the League of Cities, right? Are you?
Yeah.
Planning, I'm planning to go to the League of Cities, and we do have an appointment set up to visit, Beaver and I have an appointment set up to go to the UND Research Center, to go through there and take a look at that, and one of the things that we're kind of zeroing in on is the minerals, you know, trace minerals, to see what possibility there is or might be relative to the battery business and all those kinds of things. There, there seems to be more discussion all the time about some of that, and also we might even get into the discussion about that Brexand, you know, and they've done some studies on it before already, so there's possibility of that. And then of course, you know, the bottom line is this, we still have that issue hanging over our head about trying to get natural gas, and you know, the thing about it is this, is that they reopened that window again, that, with that legislative money, opened it till December sixteenth, and so we have had a, we had a conversation with the big supplier that moves natural gas, about the possibility of, you know, if they're, they could assist somehow in getting it to flow down, like we thought, you know, down two hundred, you know, coming from Kildare, that area. But there's so many pieces to that, you know, and of course, the bottom line is they want to get that pipeline going all the way across the state, and you know, that's a four to five year project, and that hundred and forty million that is sitting there, that could be dedicated to that is just a small, I don't even know if that's a tenth of what it would cost to put that line in across the, across the state, yeah, so. So, that's on the business side. The other thing is, we've got to get our lights dam fixed, guys, in town. That walking path, those lights have been out for over two years, and they're still out on the water.
Do you want to bring in an outside contractor?
Pardon me?
Do you want to bring in an outside contractor?
I don't know. I, you know, I've thought about that, Monty, but you know what? I, I hear what you're saying, but maybe we need to, I don't know. What's the one when you go out to Crowsies, all the way from, all the way from Baker's, all the way out to the, to the end? There's at least four or five of those lights that are out, and they've been out for ever. And I don't know if, you know, Dave mentioned that it was ballasts, but, and I don't know if there was some discussion about looking at LEDs, or there wasn't a possibility of looking at LEDs. Yeah, I don't know. It's just, you can tell for me, it's frustrating, you guys, when you're walking at four and five in the morning, it's dark, or you know.
And we haven't gotten a bid from Olson at all for that, or maybe, I think we should do that.
I mean, I'd be willing to call Mark and ask him.
We would, we will, you don't need that.
Even if he just could get out there to fix the ones that we have. You know?
Since we're on the top of the race, yeah, did look at your area at night at one time, finally, to see how dark it is, and you are if that. Uh, so I actually had Tanner Getz come up there from Rough Rider to look at it, talk to him a little bit, and he thinks we dropped the ball already. We should have done that before any houses were built up there. Because we were looking at where the transformer is versus where we should have lights. You're already gonna have to go through the back easement with streetlight power and then split off to get to those two intersections. He would like a plan actually before any more construction is done up there and all those issues going on there, but before any more houses get built, there should be a streetlight plan put in place. There's driveways already that is gonna be tough to deal with.
So being that we don't is that the that the developers? Responsibility or ours, because the developer's not gonna do it?
I was gonna say, at this point, it would probably fall on us because the developers carry through on all of their stuff that was part of the original plan, so. Yeah, it, he was right, that one intersection's bad, the other ones are a little bit better, but not good. So I actually talked to Tanner about putting one in that kind of utility easement on the west side of that road. And there's a box there that I thought was a transformer, and it's not, it's just a gang box. So they can't even tie into that unless we wanna pay for, you know, plus then you'd have one street light on one meter socket. So that'd be a, what, forty dollar charge a month just for the meter socket for one light? That wouldn't be, in the long run, that wouldn't be worth it either. Hey, I'm still waiting for information as to cost to put a solar temporary hang up there too, so. Yeah, well, I talked to him about that too, and he was like, uh, is it gonna be cost effective? You know, after he has been all the companies.
Now that won't
Well, yeah, and then on top of that, you know, we are in coal country, so you, you know. So, I hear you. So, all right, thanks.
We will get a hold of Mark and let's see if we can get him, Mark, if we can have him take a look at this. And give us an estimate, let us know what his thoughts are.
Now, we'll try again. Have you thought about, have you thought about that? Three done?
All right, um after Monty sent out the letters to the track facilities about just being good neighbors with trucking coming through our communities. I think the day that they got the letter, I got two phone calls that day from them. Um, and they are totally in agreement that the the, the one that's been on, on the south side of the highway two hundred that's been the longest, right on the highway. Uh, Matt Richter is now working uh for them and what's that? I'm sorry, you're right, north side. Yeah, the Dobbs, south, yeah. And uh, he said that they're, they don't have anything to do with the trucking company. They um, they sent, that's a, that's a different contractor they, they sent out, and so they're, and it's a group out of Denver. But they went forward, they were gonna send that letter on to them. Um, Dave Sebastian called me as well, and hates hearing those engine breaks coming through town too. He doesn't think that there's a reason why that should be happening, and he said they, they're contacting their, their truckers to let them know what was happening, so. I'm not hearing anything negative at all. Monty, have you heard anything else? Okay, so that was, that's good and nice to know.
That big one, any report on when they think they're gonna start shipping product?
So he said that, so that, that that plant you see there is, was made in Germany. It's about twelve years old, they've had it for six, they bought it six years ago. He said that the, the quote he uses is, it's been a, a death by a thousand cuts. He said there are so many little, so first of all, they almost need to get a German engineer over here from that built the, the plant. Because they, they can't figure it out. And there are also many, many parts that they're still waiting for. The smallest, um, just rollers even. Um, that, it's not just a roller you can go buy at T S E or go, go to Bismarck and order, you know, there, there's so many specific little things.
Might be a while till they're
He didn't have, uh, he didn't say, give me a date, I've seen more activity out there as of late, but I don't imagine.
It's just strange to me that they've been working on that for output years or
Said they have three investors, they're all from the Minneapolis area. And he said that all three investors are just kind of, they're, they're okay with, they're, they're just waiting. That's, that's what I heard from Matt. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Okay, moving on, twelve A, lift station number six repair estimate.
Okay, uh, lift station number six, uh, we, we got in touch with uh Slaton Excavating. And they put together a quote, all we've got going on over there is when, when this thing pumps, there, there is a leak in the, in the line, and so we've got raw sewage and stuff like that that can come out of there. The repairs are the bulk of the repairs are, are the labor associated with that. Um, it is at a level where, where we would need to make approval here as a, as a board. It's something that materials are available out there, and it is work that needs to get done so we don't get contamination and stuff going on out there. Uh, but I would be making a motion that we approve eight thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars to have Slaton go ahead and do the work, the repairs for lift station number six.
Motion by pillar.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. This was, go ahead.
So I guess I don't know, I don't know where this was. Is that by the shop?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So then we do some work in there?
Mm-hmm. Okay. What, six years ago, eight years ago?
Year ago.
Was when they replaced them uh jack valves.
No more than two years, yeah. Yeah, so this, this is beyond the, the, the work that was done on it. As a, as a result, now you, they, they could detect when they came out and investigated situation we had out there, they could, they found out that there was a leak on the one line. And then in the course of reviewing it further on the second one as well, so we're having them take care of all of the work at one time out there on this one here. And while they're, while they're in site, um, up in North Star One. We've got a vacant lot owned by the city that, that we've got a leak up there as well.
It's, it's privately owned.
Oh, it is privately owned, okay.
With your little curb stop on that lot.
So what we wanna do is, we wanna take a look at that, they, they, it's not they're not using service on that particular lot at this time. So we're looking at, seeing what we need to do to isolate that so that we can shut it off, yeah. I think the plan is to just dig down and shut off the quote, that's about. Right, so we're, we're not gonna do anything fancy, just making sure that we, we're not just pumping water out. Keeping, keeping the ground moist and green.
So when I dig down, are we gonna replace the curb stop then? I, I think all we're gonna do is just go ahead and isolate the service.
There's two lots owned by one party, they're using they have a curb stop on one and the parcel, and another isn't on, you know. Okay.
So then I guess like this isn't this bit isn't, I guess, on that job as well, is it?
No, but that, that one there would be, that would fall under just a regular maintenance type of stuff, like when we have a, a leak on the street or something like that. But we're gonna take advantage of uh uh, not having to pay for mobilization twice while they're out there.
Okay, we have a motion by pillar, any more discussion? Roll call.
Keller, aye. Stern?
Aye.
Weeder, aye. Omen, aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Twelve B, Bobcat Snowblower quotes. And Snowgate, wow.
Yeah, I did put the, I did put these one gate on there separate. So here, this is the first one is to do with the snowboard for the Bobcat, that was discussed. As part of the budget stuff, uh, there is still funding available, since one of these is available now, the other one would have to be ordered if you wanted to proceed. So that we have it for this season for sure. There was, this is the one that is available. And then this was a separate quote from Minot. This one would have to be ordered. And there is no guarantee on when that could be available. So they were looking at acquiring two of these?
No, I just have got pricing from two different, two different companies.
Do you have one at all right now, Dave?
No, that one broke down last winter, and then we sold that, well, we sold that whole equipment, so it doesn't cost more for us to fix it.
It's over.
Which one would you prefer, or is it the exact same?
This uh, that SB two hundred is just like the one Parkin Rec has, and uh, it, it's a pretty good, you, that'd be the one I would go with.
That's the one that's readily available?
Yes, they have that one on hand, yes.
And they're about the same price.
Yeah, the other model number, they don't have that one, nor neither does Minot, that other, that other puller.
And you said there's money available, Monty, for that?
We do still have the equipment ones available. The only difference between these two is one is, here is one is a seventy four inch, one is a seventy two inch, so. Big difference.
I'll make a motion to purchase the snowboard that's in stock.
Here we have a motion by Weeder.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. And this is brand new?
Brand new, what you're wanting.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Weeder, aye. Stern, uh, Keller, aye. Omen, aye.
Aye. Stern.
And the other part of that had to do with the snowplow with the reversible, uh, reversible plow with high gear. And they are giving us trade in allowance of eight hundred and fifty dollars if we get rid of one or other plow. So currently, we, we plow to the center of the streets throughout the, throughout the city. Are, are we coming up with a, a new philosophy as to how we want to plow, or would this just be used in particular areas, or what, what are the thoughts?
I, I guess it's more up to the commission, if you wanna start curving it and using a snowgate or continue the way we are. There are pros and downs to both.
Right.
I've talked to a couple of communities that use the snowgates, and they say it's still not just as easy as plowing it to the side, you still have to open storm drains, you still have to eventually haul some of the, away from the curbs just for water flowing in the spring during fall, so it's not just in your streets, getting narrower each time you blade with snowgates, I mean, there's pros and downs to both. Snowgates are definitely faster.
For the big snowstorms like we have, plowing it to the curb definitely looks better, from what I noticed. But
Except when you pull it in the driveway, now.
Yeah, well, that's where the gates would be nice, it'd be nice if they were removable, you know. The normal stuff, we could go to the center, but just big storms to get everything open, we could wing it out, but still not plug up everybody's driveway. So, so the answer to my question is, it depends. I mean, seriously, we could have a philosophy that says, depending on what, what the snowplow is, this time we're gonna do it to the sides, this time we're gonna do it to the center.
In certain areas, we're gonna do it to the center. No matter what. Yeah. We're always, we always wanna haul our snow, stores, our, our emergency routes. We still want those clear, we don't want to narrow those roads. So that, in my opinion, we'd still continue Main Street, uh, you know, those maintenance to push to the middle and haul out, but.
So, so the real question is, is, is it worth nearly forty thousand dollars?
Well, it would be over because this is just the materials, you'd have to take the pick loader to Bismarck and have another control valve put in. So you'd have transportation of getting the loader down there and back materials, and then you figured that could almost run up to ten thousand. Just to get another control or school system put in.
So when you do that, does it afford you the flexibility during the winter season till would you, would you put it on, take it off, depending on your, your
Yeah, it would still be all disconnect or quick connect, I mean, you could drop it off, put the, the other blade on, but it would be that loader specific, you couldn't put that blade on another because you wouldn't have the hydraulics to run, to run the gates.
That's for the, that's for the snowgate and a new plow. You can, you can retrofit and put them on existing blades as well.
Yes. He gave me a quote back in January for that, and provides Snowgate to have installed on one of our plows, it's over twenty thousand, just uh, for the gate, then you have the labor of putting it on and still the controls on the gal.
The equipment it would go on to is, is, is already existing. And we've had enough equipment out there, with, depending on the snow situation, it would be quick disconnect, and you would
You'd do whatever else with the machine.
And, and, and then a big dump, then, then you'd take the time to go ahead and have that on there.
Yeah, it'd be just a whole complete blade, like we got, and we'd just have the gate on it.
And that's what Beulah does as well, they do take theirs off and on and
So they, they alternate? They, they sometimes plow to the middle and
I don't, I don't know about that, all I know is about their usage of
Their downtown stuff, they go to the center, but then most
But you would have to have a regular blade, you just leave it in the opposition, then it's just a regular angle blade, right?
And then they come back around with the payload and pick, uh, it up. Sometimes during the winter when it gets too much next to the curb.
Yeah, if we have, what was it, eight or nine years ago, we had a twenty inches on Thanksgiving, twenty inches on Christmas Eve, twenty on the third of January. You know, that's you know, the last five or six years, you know. Eventually, hopefully, we start getting some, a lot of snow again, but
It's almost better than two inches every other day.
Yeah. Well, that's when they're gonna really get rough, yeah. Well, that's a lot of money, I, you know, I, I don't know if we can justify spending forty, forty to forty five thousand.
Close to fifty dollars.
The labor we're getting is a gross put in.
What we, what we spend twelve to, this year to remove the driveway stuff, basically, yes, it was right at twelve. Yeah, so that's
But that was
Four times, you'd have to have a big storm before you would break even.
Yeah, and that even was paid for, we got emergency, no removal money from the state, correct, Monty? No, we just, oh.
We, we didn't call, I heard expenses weren't enough.
Okay. Should I hurry?
Dave spent more in that situation.
It was all of our emergency fund, you're in, yeah.
You know, if we were, if we were pushing through outside and that was our regular mode of operation, then, then certainly as, as a person or that doesn't like to dig out your driveway every time the city comes through, it, it would, I think citizens wouldn't have a problem with that expense, but, well, I'm, I'm with you, Jerry, I, I don't know if we can justify it the way that we're doing business right now. Because you might grow five more years until you need that, basically. You don't know when you're gonna get a big storm and you're gonna wanna be out there. But were we, in this, in this last year, when, when you guys were out there with, and, and hired in these folks with the Bobcats, was that just primarily for intersections, or were you going out and doing
That was mainly drive, that was just mainly driveway.
Were you taking care of residents' driveways and stuff like that? So we, we've kinda created a little bit of a precedence there.
A little bit.
Okay.
Speaking of snow removal, where, how old is our existing, the, the big snowblower that we attach to the loader? And, and is that needing upgrading or anything before we
Well, we just blocked that, what, six years ago, seven?
Not long ago, at least. Yeah, maybe five or six.
Five or six years.
And we had some hydraulic And we had some hydraulic hose issues with that last year during the storm. Or is that just on the loader that we were using it on?
That was just the loader we were using it on.
Okay, okay.
Short little hydraulic hose.
Okay, so that thing's good to go. We don't need any.
Yeah, the very first, the very first year we had it, we got zeros and all, so it never, it never moved the very first year. Well, besides that rock, that's a
Yeah.
That rock that went to.
Alright, well, thanks for getting us that information, Dave. Let's say we're not gonna ask for a motion for that tonight. Alright, moving on. Twelve C, um, path repairs along Elbow Drive.
I was hoping to have, uh, Dave took Josh Meisner to look at this area. Winkler said there's no way they could even look at something yet this year. Uh, there was concerns expressed by a resident about these, the settling along this path on the elbow and Elbow Drive Bridge. And how, and getting that repaired. And then also doing some type of E D A type ramp. Cause there is no real access onto that sidewalk on that road except for going through the park, which is not a great curb line there anymore either. So I was hoping to have those bids or estimates from Mr. Meisner, but he did not show up today, so. Unless you wanna prove up to a amount or something.
Is that concrete there in decent shape? Is it just sinking?
Yeah.
You know, if the concrete's in decent shape, we could look at getting a mudjacker in there just to lift it up so that ridge isn't there. I don't know if that's gonna be cheaper or not, but.
Okay.
That's right, Nate's.
Yeah, making a name for himself, so maybe like.
Now that picture right there, is that on the north or south side of the bridge?
This one is facing south.
Yeah, you're looking south.
And the other side I think is bad too.
Yeah.
I rode by, by crosser there, Nate, it was a pretty good.
And all this side there isn't here bad, it's looking north.
Yeah. This is on here because when Dave worked with Josh, he was looking at replacing one panel on this side. But because of the curve here, looking at replacing two panels on the north side, make it. So you wouldn't have just a big ramp up to it.
Yeah, I think we could check that.
As long as it keeps concrete in decent shape, I mean.
It is, yeah.
It might be cheaper to jack it.
Cracked, cracked hole, but they could probably repair that part or make the access or whatever.
But I agree, it'd be nice to get an A D A access on that, by the park there on that curve. So we'll see what he comes back with.
Okay, yeah, I'll clear up the next meeting in the middle of this director.
Alright, thirteen public comments. We have nobody here, so pass that. Approval of bills. Move to approval of bills. Motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Pillar, discussion. Roll call.
Stern?
Aye.
Pillar?
Aye.
Wiedrich?
Aye.
Omen Almer?
Aye. I should carry you, be adjourned.